Let's go ahead and get started with our special meeting. It's a human resources meeting. Today's date is February 20th, 2025. The time is 10:10 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matari. I'm calling this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. Okay, let's move into our first business item. Item number one, bonus payments request. This is with specialty court, and we have Lisa Cheesebro here.
Thank you. This request is just to provide to our administrative judicial judge his assistant, who's taking on some pretty substantial additional roles because of the E-DADG judge, to provide a stipend of $1,500 annually for the additional duties that she'll be taking on. It is proposed that we'll take that out of the employee bonus line item. That may, well, for purposes of today, that is our request. We will look at potentially changing how we move forward with that payment as far as how it's budgeting, but for now, that is our request, that be approved to allow for that stipend to be provided to her for additional duties.
Are there any questions?
No, but I do have history on that, if anybody does have questions.
Well, if you want to add a little more, that'd be great.
Sure. So administrative district judges, they are kind of the overseer of the five northern counties, and so their judicial assistant takes on a bunch more admin roles because a lot of stuff is filtered right through the assistant to the ADJ. And this has been a long-time practice of yearly stipend for that. And the reason why it wasn't necessarily budgeted for this year is because ADJ Breeze had left that position early, and the vice administrative district judge, which is Judge McHugh, took over that spot. And we did not pay for the stipend for the Bonner County ADJ, so it's only when it's in Cootney County.
So this is a longstanding practice, and there are additional duties that the person takes on. My only question would be, you know, should we apply this for this fiscal year? And you want to come up with a better, longer-term solution for the next budget cycle? Or what are you thinking?
So, in speaking to some of the auditor yesterday, I thought that she made some suggestions about potentially instead of a lump sum, doing it as allocation by percentage. And so there's actually more of a benefit for the recipient, obviously with the tax implications that come with a bonus.
Like a higher duty pay?
Yeah, exactly. And so we're going to look at that moving forward as in the next fiscal year, but for now, this is our request, given that this is where we're at at this point.
Okay.
And as far as the line item is prepared for that.
Well, then, we would be looking at the bonus for this year only.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Everline? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the bonus payment request for specialty court.
For FY '25?
Yes.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item two, position conversion. This is a conversion of a registered nurse position, 061-004, from one full-time to two part-time positions. This is with juvenile detention and Director Sheffield.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I have a budget savings request for you this morning. We have a full-time nurse who is retiring on March 31st. So I'm requesting approval to replace her with two part-time positions. Part-time positions will offer greater scheduling flexibility for us and also ensure services in case one nurse is out for an extended period of time. Additionally, the part-time positions help reduce costs by minimizing benefits expense. Each nurse working 20 hours a week would be eligible for Percy. That would be their only benefit. And then one other request attached to that, I would be requesting a two-week overlap with our full-time nurse and one part-time nurse for two weeks. That would constitute 40 hours of overlap over two weeks. This doesn't create any compression, and the auditor has provided a cost savings projection for this request.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Motion?
I move that we approve the position conversion of the registered nurse, 061-004, from one full-time to two part-time positions with juvenile detention.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries, and thank you for looking out for the budget like that. Moving on to item number three, sick leave policy, 313, proposed revisions. This is with human resources, and we have Director Sylvia Proud.
Sylvia Proud, for the record, before the board, I have several policy revisions being proposed to you, and the primary reason that the policies are being updated is with the addition of our new short-term disability benefit, there's some conditions on how you can use your leave benefits if you're using the standard short-term disability benefits. So legal has reviewed the policies, and we did have the auditor's office look at them as well, because it could impact payroll purposes. So I'll start with the sick leave policy, and I'm just going to highlight some key changes for the board. What, couple of the changes that we're incorporating is that sick leave accruals will not be earned and may not be used while receiving the county-provided short-term disability wage benefit. So part of the standard policy is you can only get 60% of your wages with the short-term disability policy. You can't supplement it with your leave benefits. So we had to clarify that. Sick leave hours will not be earned if the employee has not actively worked for six months, whether or not the employee has accruals. And we started putting that language into policy when you, when the board updated the last vacation revision we did, because what we found when people were on extended leave, beyond like the six-month period, they were continuing to accrue. It was, and, but they weren't actively working. So we want to start that practice with all our leave benefits. And then the other item is a sick leave accrual balance does not guarantee continued employment with the county. So whether you have accruals or not, if there's a decision to end employment with someone, the accruals don't matter in this situation. And that was also incorporated into our vacation leave policy. And it really ties to those extended leaves beyond six months that that became an issue.
Questions?
The short-term disability, is that for six months? What, what is that length of that time?
Yes. The short-term disability initially has a 14-day waiting period, and the employee can use their leave that they have on the books while they're waiting. If they don't have it, it's unpaid. And then it could be, get approved up to six months. Now, with the pregnancy, it's not a full six months. It depends on the individual situation. If there's factors that would complicate the delivery of the mom, or the mom, not the baby, sort of thing, but typically it's six months. Then after six months, if the employee is still off, they could then apply for the county's long-term disability benefit.
Okay.
And then just with respect to the accrued sick leave, when it comes to separation, that gets applied towards an account, or does that disappear?
Yes. Depending on the years of service that you have, it would go, a percentage of your time would go into a VIBA account. So it's deferred into that account, and then the employee gets that. But it's never 100%. The max is 60%.
Okay.
And that happens first day of their 16th year forward. But it starts out at, up until your fourth year, you get 0% put into your VIBA. Then the fifth year to the ninth year, it's 30%. And 10th through 15th, it's 40. And then anything after the 16th, starting the 16th year, it's 60%.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Everline, do you have any questions?
I think it's a good policy.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll take a motion.
All right. And then just so we're aware that this is just approving it to come before a business meeting, we'll have to do that there officially. So I move that we approve sick leave policy, 313, proposed revisions.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item four, family and medical leave and military leave policy, 324, proposed revisions, human resources, and Director Sylvia Proud again.
Yes. Again, this ties to our short-term disability benefit, and also to provide more clarification of the differences of family medical leave and military leave, and that if you're on workers' comp, that they're concurrent with FMLA, and also if you're taking short-term disability, it's concurrent with FMLA. Just a lot of key cleaning up of the policy. Some of the key points on the changes, employees must use any paid accruals, comp time, sick and vacation leave, usually in that order, concurrently with their FMLA time off for work unless the employee is on an improved, on an improved short-term disability leave. The short-term disability benefit runs concurrently with FMLA. And then when they're in their 14-day waiting period, they can use their own accruals, but after that, they can't supplement their income, because short-term disability pays that 60%. But they can't use their accruals to supplement their, their pay. And we, we rearranged a lot of the policy just to get things in the right areas so it flows better, got rid of extra language that we didn't need based on how the law reads and so forth. So those are the major changes to FMLA and the military leave policy.
Okay. Any questions? Now, I just have one, and it really is more the, a bigger overarching question, which is, you know, we have a bunch of individual items, but I trust they were reviewed comprehensively, that they all fit together nicely, that there's no loopholes in between any of them.
Yes, we really, it took us a long time to get through these policies, because it was like, oh, there's this, and then it had this domino effect, and I believe we've gotten all of them. Lexi and Cecilia and I were at the committee working on it, and then we incorporated the auditor's office in discussions, and we even had discussions with the Liant because this short-term disability policy and how it works, and can you supplement income and not? And yes, I think we've got them all covered. I mean, it's been vetted through several, several people.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Brandy Falcone, for the record. During the two-week waiting period, are you required to use your accruals, or do you have the option of using, taking unpaid during that time?
You use your accruals, is what the policy is saying.
Okay.
Yes.
If no one has any questions, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve family and medical leave and military leave policy, 324, proposed revisions.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item five, leave of absence without pay and military leave policy, 322, proposed revisions with human resources and Director Sylvia Proud again.
Okay. One of the key aspects of this policy was separating a leave of absence for personal reasons, extended for an employee, and then the military leave of absence, because the current language we have in place is pretty confusing. And we made sure that it can, our most, it complies with the law, employment law and so forth. So with the leave of absence, people, individuals, employees may qualify for the county's short-term disability benefit. So we call that out, you know, and then we're, we'll connect them to do an FMLA application. But actually, an employee can get short-term disability benefit without qualifying for FMLA, because you've got, for FMLA, you have to be employed 12 months and work 1,250 hours. So with our short-term disability plan, there isn't that restriction, and if there's a medical condition, they could use short-term disability. It's a little unique. The other thing we needed to call out, that after the employee has been in a no-work status for six months, six months, the employee's group health plan would end. At that point, they would be eligible, if they wanted to take COBRA and pay the full expense of the health plan. And that is a regent's criteria. So we really needed to clear, clear our policies up to bring that out. Any of the paperwork we submit to staff when they're doing FMLA or some sort of a leave, we're making them aware of that situation, and if their time should get close to that six-month period, we're sending them letters and saying, you know, your county paid benefits end here, you'd be eligible if you want to take COBRA. So that was another change that we've added to that policy. And then with the military perspective, our military members, with their accrued leave, they can choose to use accrued leave, or they're not, or they don't have to. So they determine that based on the laws of employment law. So we've called that out in policy. We've also made sure, we had it in policy already, that every calendar year, Cootney County would pay all service member employees their full hourly wage during the employee's required military leave time off for up to 15 eight-hour days, for a total of 120 hours of paid military leave. We call that out, and then we just, the other thing we do call out is that if the employee fails to return from their military leave of absence or failure to contact their supervisor, department head, or elected officials within three days after their scheduled to return to work, it would be considered a voluntary resignation. But we would be working with legal and ICrim to make sure they give the blessing on that and feel that it's relevant to it. But we did want to make those changes in policy to clarify it more. And those, that would be on, for the military leave and leave of absence.
Questions? Motion? Thank you.
I move that we approve the leave of absence without pay and military leave policy, 322, proposed revisions.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item six, vacation policy, 311, proposed revisions, human resources, Director Sylvia Proud again. Thank you.
The board had recently updated the vacation leave policy, but now with our short-term disability benefit that we provide as of 2025, we had to make just some minor adjustments to it. And one of them is that vacation accruals will not be earned and may not be used while receiving the county's provided short-term disability wage benefit. So we needed to make sure that was in policy. We also call out that accrued unused vacation hours will be paid out upon separation or a change in employment status from full-time to part-time, provided the employee has been employed by the county for at least six months. The employee's vacation payout is based on their rate of pay at the time of separation. We didn't have that language in our vacation policy, and we had that occur. We had a recent encounter with that, so we wanted to clarify that in the policy, that you have to be employed six months at least to get any kind of vacation payout, based on the policy change we did a while back. So those are the highlights of that policy.
Questions? I'm just curious, why six months, not 12?
We worked with the auditor's office, and typically, vacation leave is paid out immediately. But looking back, I think we looked at some history of employees who have left and so forth, and six months seemed to be reasonable, and that's what we had proposed in the original vacation leave policy. And that's why we left it there, at six months.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
Did you want to consider 12 months, or?
I mean, unless this board wants to, you know. Look, you know, the first, I mean, the beginning is always a little dicey. You never know what you're going to get, and it is something that we pay out to people. I kind of feel like 12 months, you know, we're going to have a much better sense of the world. I think even the federal government has probationary periods for 12 months, because we're witnessing that right now with a lot of layoffs in DC with probationary employees that have been there for 12 months or less.
I do recall another reason why we went with the six months. So the prior policy, you had to wait six months till you accrued your 40 hours and got them put into your bank. And so that's why we use that six-month mark, because if somebody left six months and one day after they got their 40 hours, they got it paid out. So it really was kind of continuing along that same trend of what we had in our past policy. So anything up to six months, you do not get paid out, even though your accruals start immediately.
Brandy Falcone, for the record. So yeah, that discussion between HR and auditor, it was a while ago.
Yes.
And I remember, I think the six months was kind of a compromise between us and HR. We had wanted a longer period of time. HR had wanted a shorter one, and so we kind of compromised on six months. That's what I remember.
Right. And, and it aligned with how we were doing the former vacation policy.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, when it comes to these things, that the, the better we can be at weeding out people sooner, who are not going to, you know, do their job, basically, then I don't have a problem with it. My concern is that we don't do that, and we end up creating issues, and as a consequence of that, it becomes a much more expensive proposition for the county, because we're not focused on, you know, maintaining high-productive people and quickly separating from those who are not, that don't meet, you know, the, the standards, if you will. So that's the main reason I bring that up, because it is just another payout for the county. And, you know, then the question is, what do we want for what one would term, you know, a probationary period for a new employee? You know, is that six months? Is that 12 months?
We do not emphasize a probationary period in our personnel policy.
Well, I understand, but I'm just using that as a term for this discussion, not as a definition.
Right. And departments pretty much have it on their radar, that if a new employee isn't performing, to address it immediately, to, you know, call out those performance issues that are occurring, try and get them, that employee on track to be successful. And then if they're not, you know, they work towards terminating the employee or the employee's leaves on their own. And they have, everyone kind of has that impression, we do have a probationary period, and I think some departments may call it out, maybe Darren, because they'll have the history of all of that, could speak to that. But I think departments have gotten better to shorten that timeframe of looking at, oh, they're, this new employee isn't working out, and how do we move that forward, of either seeing how they become successful, we should try and give them all the tools and help them be successful, and if they're not working on that exit plan.
Yeah. I, I know that there are some positions that take a minimum of a year of just training. So it's even harder to identify those things. So if the board wants to entertain 12 months, you know, we can have that conversation.
I'm, I'm all about the taxpayer. You know, we talk about employees and all that, but we got to, we got to start bringing taxpayer into the, the mix.
And so... Does that mean that you are for a 12-month policy?
No. I would have a 12-month, a six-month policy.
So a six-month is okay? Commissioner Duncan?
It's up to you. Can go either way.
If I may, again, Lexi reminded me of a conversation we all have had, that, you know, if you extended even that to 12 months, all that person's going to do is if they have some accruals on the book, they'll probably take it. So rather than them hanging out for their two weeks, they're going to start taking vacation days and try and drain it that way. I think either way, it's, it would happen.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that, because people are going to take advantage of the rules to serve themselves. The question is, are we going to focus on our supervisors to train them properly to act quickly, and not to allow things to kind of carry on, or worse, act and act inappropriately, which means we have to reset the clock, and meanwhile, employees are accruing more and more benefits. So I think that's where the emphasis needs to be. I, I don't have a problem with it being 12 months. I don't have a problem with it being six months as much, as long as the emphasis is there, and we've talked about this before, of, you know, focusing on training managers how to properly manage people, so that the good ones are happy, because the not-so-good ones are quickly separated out. So if that's good with you, then it's good with me. Commissioner Duncan?
I guess we can stay at six months, and then look at things down the road if we need to.
I mean, I, I will tell you that it won't take much convincing from you if you want to go to 12 months.
I mean, I don't know. That's just kind of what came to my mind, would be the 12 months. And again, they're not going to be losing anything if they end up taking it, but back to the managerial thing, the manager has to approve it. So...
Well, then, why don't we do this? Why don't we approve it today for six months, and maybe revisit in the next 12 months, and ask ourselves, have we done payouts this way? And if we have, then maybe we need to revisit.
I think that's a good idea. It gives you, you can get, you'll have more practice.
Yes.
Yes, let's make decisions based upon actual information as opposed to prospective Okay, well, I guess for item six, would you like to make a motion?
I move we approve, approve vacation policy, 311, proposed revisions.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries, and you'll keep track of that for us, Sylvia?
Well, I'll put it on tickler and make sure we're monitoring the payout and when it's happening, and also to bring it back.
Yeah. Can you, can you keep us up with everything going on?
We'll try. Yes, we'll work hard at it.
Good.
Thank you.
We'll set some system up, absolutely.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, insurance programs policy, 350, proposed revisions, human resources, and again, Director Sylvia Proud.
Okay. So again, tied to the short-term disability, we looked at this policy, the insurance program policy as well, because we needed to add short-term disability to the insurance programs policy. But we also needed to add, so the first thing we've added is the sheriff's office, sworn officer, 911 dispatch, and their families having that triple IA, like employee assistance program for the sworn officers. It's enhanced employee assistance program that deals with law enforcement staff and their families. We've had that program for, I'm going to say a year and a half now, about a year and a half, I think. And I think it's been successful. I think it's being utilized. I haven't seen data, but I know some other kind of claims have not been coming forward to us from a work-comp perspective, so we feel like it's, it's going well. We did add short-term disability insurance to that policy as well, to talk about how it works, and that after so long, you're in a no-pay status, that sort of thing. We added para, because Percy wasn't mentioned in our insurance programs policy, so we added information about Percy. And COBRA was the other one we've added. And then all other items should be about the same as they were before.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the insurance... I move that we approve the Insurance Programs Policy 350, proposed revisions.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item eight, Employee Performance Discussion, this is in Community Development. It's an executive session, so I'll take a motion to enter into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061B.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Mataro?
Aye.